Well, welcome, everyone. I think everybody's saying hi to everybody else. So we appreciate your time certainly and something as important as this for the community of the long term. And so, thank you very much for agreeing to serve. What I thought would be, since we have an initial meeting, is we take a few minutes in and our resident pirate, Adam Tucker, managed to injure his eye temporarily.
Temporarily. Nothing serious. And, you know, Pirate Tuesday is not catching on in Murfreesboro. I'm very disappointed.
Yeah. He'll give us just a brief overview of the, I know you've had a chance probably now to read the trust agreement, overview of the trust agreement. We can answer any questions that you might have on that. And then Kenya will, she has the agreement actually assigned, so we'll have her pass it around and walk it around so that you guys could all sign that and then she'll notarize it and then the trust will be formed. The next step then would be to elect the chairman. And if you look in your packets there, I think you got a, there's a ballot in there and you can fill that out and shift it in. Anyone who doesn't want to serve as chairman, unless everybody does and then you're off here again. But if anyone doesn't want to serve, then if they don't want to mention that, then that's fine and we can make the vote a little easier. We'll pass it all around. And this is Jennifer Brown, who is the city treasurer and city recorder, so she's used to handling those types of things. And so, she can do that and our finance director. So, any questions before we start with the trust agreement? Turn it over to Adam.
Just a really quick background overview and then be happy to open things up for questions. As you know, the corpus of this trust will be the proceeds, or the vast majority of the proceeds, from the city's sale of the Murfreesboro Electric Department in 2020. Why a trust and why doesn't the money just go into the city's general fund or some other specialized fund? And that really is, is because with, the city can't invest in anything other than treasury bonds and treasury bills and things like that. And so, obviously, we would like to get, if the funding is going to be used for public purposes or charitable purposes, we'd want a better rate of return on that money. And so, working with outside legal counsel, Mr. LaLance and a couple of other people or in the state comptroller's office, we decided to amend the city's charter to create this trust, which is kind of a, an operating, it's loosely affiliated, for lack of a better term, with the city, but not, it's not the city's money once it goes into the trust. And the trust is, it'll be subject to the same investment rules and operations as the state, that applies to the state pension fund and be governed by the prudent investor rule. And so, as members of the board, you would be making investment decisions as fiduciaries for the trust and, you know, following the prudent investor rule. And then, under the terms of the trust agreement, making disbursements for charitable purposes. The way that is structured, again, I'm operating at the 30,000-foot view here, is that there is going to be a committee on contributions. It's already been, those members have already been selected and been named to that committee. They've not met yet, but they would meet and solicit applications for grants or contributions from organizations operating within Murfreesboro and serving the Murfreesboro community. And they would evaluate those and make recommendations to this board. This board would then determine, do we want to approve these disbursements? And this would occur on an annual basis and those, the organizations that this board approved would then go to city council, where the city council could not substitute another beneficiary, but for some reason, they didn't, the city council felt that it didn't really serve the interests of the city, they could veto it. And then there would be some options where the, either that the veto portion of that distribution could either be redistributed among the other approved beneficiaries or that amount just would be dispersed. You know, there's, that's the 30,000-foot view. If, I'm happy to entertain any questions you might have. The trust agreement here is between the, the city as the settler and the board of trustees as collectively, you know, the entity that has a fiduciary duty towards, for the trust. And the beneficiary is, beneficiaries are the city with money coming back to the city and then also money being dispersed to various charitable organizations within the city.
Any questions on the trust agreement?
Adam, what's a qualifying nonprofit? Because I know some of the money's apparently already been committed for roadwork, which wouldn't be a nonprofit. So I was trying to get a perspective on what's already been, I think, committed from council to what would be the types of nonprofits if there, or there may not be any constraints. I don't know what the guardrails are on that.
There, well, first of all, I did skip over something in my explanation. There are two types of distributions. One would be an annual distribution back to the city's general fund. And then there would be distributions to charitable organizations. I mean, basically, the, there are criteria set forth in, and I think it's in the trust agreement.
Yeah. The qualified beneficiary is a defined term.
Yeah.
They have to be a nonprofit. Generally, it has to be something the city has traditionally funded. And then there are levels of funding. So no one nonprofit can get more than 25%. And education gets a percentage and there's like three different types, categories of nonprofits that have received the distributions. Education and youth services get 20%. Community and safety and victim services, 15%. That's the 15% distribution for charitable contributions. The 85%, you alluded to a few things on roadworks. The 85% will go to, usually is when the city takes a distribution, a division of those between the roads and parks and the general fund. And so, that's for the money. Now, there is some money that came at the closing and there will be some money that incremental payment that's received in middle Tennessee that will go to, the city will retain and will go towards those projects. And there's some specific projects that are ways to be funded. So, Rick?
So, and I will, I think I'll clarify what your question was. Not all of the money that's coming from the sale is even coming to the trust. So, the money that's not coming to the trust is the money that's going to the road projects, the West Park. That, so that's completely separate from the trust.
Is that one time, Rick? For example?
Well, it's technically.
I think the first three payments.
It's technically about five years. There's some, there's some money that's coming out for those types of things. I can't, I don't remember the exact number, but it's in here, back in this forwarded up section six. But just to answer your question, the road projects have nothing to do with the types of charities that are.
I didn't think so.
Yeah. But it's a, it's just not even coming from the trust.
Specifically, if you kind of read two documents together in terms of what is a qualified beneficiary, it's going to be a qualified beneficiary as defined in the trust agreement, which is section 17, that serves a charitable purpose. But then if you look at the charter amendment, which was, is the first attachment, there is on the first page, a list of purposes for the trust. And so, a potential recipient is going to be a qualified beneficiary, which is for tax purposes, a charitable foundation or something like that, that serves one of the purposes that's listed as the purpose for the trust. To promote and advance the social welfare of the inhabitants of the city. That type of thing.
Just so you guys kind of know this too, I just think it would be important for you to have sort of a little bit of background. This is pretty simple, but the essence of the decision of the council when we built this some months ago was essentially that the amount of money that was the sale price of the electric department would ultimately, somewhere very close, would ultimately make it into the trust. What's getting kind of spent on this front-end basis is the interest portion, because it's amortized over 15 years at 3.3% or 3.35%. And so, essentially, there's this 240-some-odd million dollars that was the sale price. Then, as you amortize it over 15 years, there was another 50 million or so. That's kind of was the idea behind. That's money we felt okay about spending on road projects and things like that, but that two, the number is 238 or 248 that's going to eventually make it to the trust over that 15-year period. So, i.e. the amount of the sale, okay? Just so you got some background on it.
Good. So, to clarify that, so in the private charter number 62, page A5, Parks and Rec, it shows funding payments there. And then on the next page, to Mr. Moss's comment, which is a transportation restricted account, those funds are not coming out of the 5% distribution for the trust.
Correct.
That's something else.
That's all, that, those, that, those accounts have already been established within the cities or will be established within the city's internal finance, financial structure.
Yeah. They won't even come into the trust.
Yes. Yeah. For purposes of the, the funds coming into the trust, you want to be looking at that chart on the top of A2 of the.
Attachment number six is. Yeah. The big, the 40 and one back here, it lays it all out.
There's a notebook, there's a pull-out sheet. Just shows the distribution.
I'll offer, I don't think we should maybe take the time to do it tonight, but at some point or another, I would certainly offer to walk through this with you guys at one of our meetings to, it'd probably be just beneficial or at lunch, if we want to have lunch together one day or something like that, I don't mind just walking through some of this with you individually or as a group, just so everybody has an understanding of kind of the magnitude and the structure of it, okay? I'm glad to do that, however that suits the committee, the trust.
Any more questions?
Just, just because you mentioned board members having a meeting together for lunch, I just want to give a little caution that this is, I've already forgotten. If you meet with Rick to go over this exhibit, that's fine. How, but, but this is, this is a quasi-government nonprofit entity that is subject to the open meetings law, Tennessee's open meetings law. And what that means is two, two or more members cannot meet in an unadvertised meeting to deliberate or decide something that would be voted on at a future meeting. So, that, so going over that chart, if you want to meet Rick for lunch, that is fine. But like, when it comes to, you're going to be making decisions about voting on a slate of potential qualified beneficiaries, that's a discussion that has to occur in a public meeting.
So Rick has to buy one?
Rick, yeah.
So, I have a, just a quick Robert's Rules of Order question on page 13. Coram, a majority of, a number of trustees, I assume that's a simple majority?
Yes.
3.3?
Yes.
I can't identify it. I know, I read it, I notated it and can't find exactly what it is. I do recall, annual, maybe it's annual distributions here in the actual act. It states at the fiscal year end, the 5% needs to be calculated based on the amount that's in the trust and then to be distributed like the next day. Maybe I translated that wrong when I read it?
Yeah, I think the, actually, the distribution wouldn't occur until the first of March.
Okay.
And that's, and that, the purpose of that is really to let the city know, well, I said March, I think it's April. And that's so the city can get it into its budget process. And, but the distribution itself, after the calculations were done, there's a period of time in there that's enough to do, the board to meet and do the work that they need to do before it actually has to be distributed out. The number will be calculated. And so, as long as it's available, it will be fine when it's distributed.
The projection is based on, the 5% is based on, the way it is visioned right now is that the fiscal year is a calendar year. And so, that, did you change it again?
Yeah.
Okay, then maybe then.
But the calculation is still done December 31st.
Okay. The calculation is still done on December 31st as to what the value of the trust is. And then, it's that number that is used to determine the 5%. But the distribution doesn't have to, doesn't have to occur for.
Until April.
April 30th.
Yes.
April 30th. And so, once the number gets set, the calculation, 5% can be done, whatever.
Craig, just a quick question, clarification, I think it's the answer to this, but the 85% that's given back to the city fund, obviously, that's totally at the discretion of the city council.
Right. The city council decides how.
Sure. And so then, the question I asked myself when I first saw it then, why wasn't that money just put in reserve? But then you're limited by the investment rules of city government. So this allows, I guess, a more aggressive investment philosophy to meet future needs for the cities. So I get it. Just clarifying that.
Yeah. That's exactly why we set the trust and work with the comptroller to be able to set that apart, to be able to invest it much better than what the city is. We're very restrictive.
Makes sense.
And part of that is, you know, part of the distinction is because this is not, this is not tax revenue that's coming, it is, it's one-time revenue source. It's a significant amount and the comptroller understood that and we worked with the comptroller's office to make sure all our i's were dotted and t's were crossed in that regard.
Looks like we've got the trust all signed, which means now we actually have a trust. Next thing to do is to elect the chair and then I can turn this whole thing over to the chair and let them. So, my thought was, I'm open to suggestions, was that folks would go out the ballot there and pass them over and we could take a look. Again, if anybody feels that they want a certain chair, just make that known and people will put the, put you down and vote for you. I might do it anyway.
I'm just going to say that Kevin's sitting in the seat and has the gavel.
Yeah.
I'm just kind of saying.
Set out.
I thought that was better than me saying, "I really don't want to do it," but.
If there's a tie, then we'll pull out some paper, do it again.
We're just filling this out.
Two, three.
Someplace they have to report a decision.
I got it. I think they'll know. This, I can shoot the cigarette ballot. All right, good. Oh, man. Hey, Adam, while they're doing that, one of the questions that I had as we were going into our next section here of adoption of bylaws, what capability, I think I read it, but I just want to ask for clarification. What capability do we have to change those bylaws? We are able to change those bylaws, correct?
As long as they're consistent with the trust, you can change them any time.
Yeah, consistent with the charter amendment, the trust agreement and the authority granted to the board in those two, those two documents. But aside from those restrictions and general law, you can make it basically anything you want. Like, if you wanted, like, the chair to have to wear an eye patch, you could do that.
Mr. Gentry, my congratulations or condolences, whichever, but you were a fellow because of the chair. So.
Thank you.
I'll turn it over to you. You have an agenda there, of course, it's your prerogative. You can change the agenda, whatever you feel like. Agenda is the adoption of the bylaws, which really sets the board in process and is framework to do. Before we do that. Board secretary, that's, thank you, Jennifer. If the board could appoint a board secretary, it can be one amongst you all, it could be someone else, a member of the station. The ground does it for the city, she does a really good job. She has a staff that gets the minutes ready. And so, if the board's comfortable with that, we can do that. If they want to do something else, we can certainly make those accommodations. So, the board wants to make a nomination and, or make a motion and vote?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
All right. And so, why don't you do the process of, well, we don't have to do voice vote, we can do.
Thank you all, aye?
Yeah. All in favor?
Aye.
Sounds like you got it.
Thank you, Jennifer.
So, Mr. Gentry, bylaws.
All right, folks, I'm at the practice of, get some practice on my Robert's Rules, but I'll do the best I can with this today. I guess the first action we have is adoption of the bylaws and I suppose we need to take a vote on that?
In the notebook, there was suggestion on the bylaws that were, I'll have to find the page here real quick, but.
Page ten.
They're kind of, they're generally a bylaws that were made consistent with the trust to do them as much as possible. And like Rick said, are asked for as we go along and there need to be some changes. So, certainly, take the city's trust agreement. So, there is a recommendation unless anybody has any changes.
So, does anyone have any changes to the bylaw that they would like to propose?
No changes, I'll make a motion to approve the bylaws.
Second.
So, has been properly motioned? Well, I suppose we need to take a vote?
Discussion?
Discussion?
Yeah.
Saying none, I suppose we can take a vote. Ms. Brown?
Mr. Applegate?
Yes.
Ms. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Flat?
Yes.
Mr. Gentry?
Yes.
Mr. LaLance?
Aye.
Mr. Moss?
Yes.
Mr. Stone?
Aye. We have some bylaws now. Mr. Chairman?
Making progress.
Been moving right along, right down the agenda. I suppose we've had a brief discussion over the matters included in the book that we've received here. I suppose we can review the conflict of interest policy initially. Has everyone had a chance to take a look at that? I believe that's on page 22, your booklet.
Make a, ask a question, this will probably be for Adam, just to make sure, do we need to approve the bylaws of the committee on contributions separately?
I was just about to raise that point, that they are a separate set of bylaws, so if you.
They're under.
Number nine.
Oh, they're under number nine?
Yeah. We were going to talk about the committee and their role.
Sorry.
Just so you know.
It's in order for a long time.
So, I don't suppose we have to, are required to take any action on the conflict of interest policy, are we? Do we need to take a vote on it or is this up for discussion?
They're offered and if the board doesn't have to now, they can reflect on it more. Really, it's a, it would be a strong recommendation, at least these three policies are policies that the board should take up relatively shortly. The IRS recommends it, best practices recommend it, and so, the sooner the better, but if it's whatever the board wants to do, if they're comfortable adopting them now, then we can adopt them. If they would have applied earlier, then they can be adopted later.
And don't we usually receive a form where we state our conflicts?
Yes, we, there's a form, I didn't include it in the booklet because it was getting a little long, but yeah. We'll get the form out. We'll get that out and circulate to the board once a policy gets in place.
I suppose that's something that would be required to be sought on an annual basis or just initially.
Adopted, reviewed on a regular basis? You adopt annually or?
Every year.
Every year, yeah.
So, individual disclosures would need to be done every year?
Every year, right.
Things change.
Yeah. That's exactly what I was getting at.
I think we're going to discuss this, I don't want to be jumping ahead, but I think we're going to discuss some things like how often we're going to meet and some things like that. But that kind of goes to maybe how I feel about whether or not we should go ahead and adopt these. If we're going to meet again in a month, because this is the beginning, I'd be perfectly fine to sort of, have a chance to go through this and we can adopt them in a month. But if we're not going to meet for another three months, we may want to go ahead and get this thing knocked out. I don't know what everybody thinks about that. I think we had in mind maybe quarterly or.
Well, usually, I think to get things organized and based on funding, how we're going to fund, we probably will meet either sometime during, or very early March. So we'll probably meet pretty short.
Yeah. Y'all want to put it off till then?
Well, because many of these, I'm going to say are very perfunctory and I don't think really bear much discussion. So, I mean, I'm, most of these, I'm happy to move forward on. I mean, anything that's got any concern, I'm happy to defer, but.
I read through them. I don't have any concerns with them, so more time's not going to help me, but if it helps somebody else.
Make a motion.
Well, we probably determine which ones of the policies, those three, I'm totally comfortable with all of them. Review them.
I'll make a motion for that? Yeah.
I'll move approval or adoption of the conflict of interest, the whistleblower and the document retention policy.
Second. Been probably motioned and seconded for, to adopt the policies as written. Ms. Brown?
Mr. Applegate?
Aye.
Ms. Davis?
Aye.
Mr. Flat?
Aye.
Mr. Gentry?
Aye.
Mr. LaLance?
Aye.
Mr. Moss?
Aye.
Mr. Stone?
Aye.
Thank you. Policies have been adopted. Next, we can move on to the review of the trust funding.
Just over to Ms. Brown. She's been tracking the fund so far, just give a current status of that, current balance, and then talk about further handling, how the money gets transferred to the trust.
So far, we've received 75 million of payments. The initial payment was 40 million and we've received the first two installment payments of 17 million each. So for the trust, there would be 41,195,010. That would be going into the trust fund once everything is set up and ready. And then, what you guys have seen in the charter amendment for the parks and transportation, those accounts have been set up and we have moved the money into that for the city. And then, the city's portion would be the remainder of the 75 million that would stay in the city account, which would be about 10 million dollars staying with the city for council to determine the remainder.
Jennifer, our paperwork has, the fund balance is 41,195, and that looked like the correct math when I did it the other night, but is the 45, does that include?
It's 41,195 and 10. It's 41,195 and 10. So 41,195, 010.
I thought you said 45 million, I'm sorry.
It's 75 million total.
Got it. Yep, got it.
Right now, the funds are held in a Raymond James account?
Yes, right now, they're sitting in a Raymond James account, and we've had discussions with Raymond James about setting up a temporary account with them as a holding account until the board has a chance to go through RFP process, determine who they want their broker and trustees to be, because we understand that will be a longer process. But we want to be able to move this 41 million separate more immediately. So we have had those discussions with them, and they're sitting on go, waiting to move those funds.
Originally, we had, I talked to Rick about the fact it was with Raymond James, because of the relationship there. But I mentioned to Rick that the funds were investments that we thought would need to mature in order to transfer them unless we forfeit some interest. But apparently, that's not the case. We checked since we talked. They can go ahead and be transferred, we don't have to worry about.
So since he brought that up, I'll let you guys know, that's a, that's a relationship that the city has, was affiliated with Raymond James. It has nothing to do with me, it's not with me, just make sure we're clear on that. But I'm going to stay out of that conversation, because I think all we're really doing is talking about going from Raymond James in this title, the city of Murfreesboro, to Raymond James in this title, the trust. Until we all decide kind of more how to invest the money on a big picture level, okay? But I'm going to abstain from that discussion and vote, just because I don't want to, you know, because it says Raymond James beside it, even though it's, I don't have any direct or indirect benefit.
Mr. Tyndall, do we, does the trust have its own FEIN to this point?
No, we don't. And so that was some of the things that we need to do. We need to do some legwork, and what we'd anticipate doing that, once we got the trust set up, is to go ahead and get the EIN number now and start the process, and we'll talk a little bit about, we'll probably have to file for a 501(c)(3). We're going to need to get a tax opinion on that, but we'll get our designation, it looks like. So there is some legwork. We'll need to do a resolution that'll comply with the bank and with Raymond James as far as authorizations to do the logistics of transferring funds and all the paperwork that investment people like to do. So we have a little bit of work to do, and that's why I thought if we met in February, early March, whenever we can get schedules together, we'd have that all done by then, hopefully, and be able to come back to the board and actually put in, build back what we need to as far as resolutions and such. So there is some paperwork.
Thanks, sir.
So until then, the funds will just sit exactly where they're at?
Till then, we thought we'd tell the board where we're at, how much we have, what we're doing, and then we'll come back with more information on our next meeting. And that kind of leads into the next one on maybe, if we jump down to 6B, appointing an administrator, somebody to really facilitate all this stuff, to have the board give authority to sign, you know, the EIN application and things like that. We'll need to do that, and the board appoints an administrator, and we'll draft a resolution then that covers all the avenues and allow the administrator to go through and do the paperwork, so the board can get everything in order for our next meeting. We want to jump to that. We can talk about that.
Is that from a resolution standpoint, we're going to identify one person on this board of trustees that can sign on behalf of the board of trustees for that purpose?
Yeah, amongst them, if you want to appoint someone, you can do that. It doesn't have to be amongst trustees, but we'll draft a resolution that fits the bill for submitting with, if the IRS wants to know why this person signed it, we'll have a resolution, the board says, that's our trust administrator. The bank will need it, Raymond James will need it. So it's really someone just to facilitate all that work, as Ms. Davis does, probably, all for Kristi Houston. The trust agreement allows the city to do the administrative work, so when a trust, you want to appoint an administrator from the city, that's fine. When I appoint me to do it, that's fine, I'll take it up. You have the staff to be able to fill in the blanks and get the things done, so we're happy to do that.
Should the board make a recommendation on who we would like to appoint? Anybody have any thoughts?
I would like to ask Rick, from his experience on city council. I mean, did you generally appoint Craig or someone on staff, or Adam to sign on behalf?
Well, there's a lot of layers on that one, but yeah, Jennifer and I, and Ashley, the mayor, for signing, for example, checks and things like that. There's lots of layers of different things we do, but generally, the city manager has the authority to sign certain things, to spend a certain amount of money, up to a certain amount. And then it goes to the council, who usually designates either me or the mayor to sign whatever agreements being put in front of them. So, yeah, there's not one resolution that solves that. There's, instead of, in lieu of resolutions, there's codes and administrative processes.
And I know part of our legal status with the state is, or would be a separate entity from the city. Is there any concern over the con solution between that separation, if we have you or Mr. Tucker or Jennifer signing those documents?
The trust is actually a component unit, from an accounting standpoint, of the city, so it still remains part of the city. It'll be part of the city's audit, so the trust itself will be audited by city auditors. And the trust agreement allows the city to provide administrative assistance until such time as the trust decides on its own, and the city council grants permission for them to hire their own staff and go forward in that manner. So it's, I don't think there creates any issues from a conflict standpoint or anything along those lines. It's just relates logistics to make it simple.
You have the authority under the trust agreement and under the Charter Amendment to, in the case of legal representation, select your own legal representation, and get down later, here we talk about retaining tax counsel. Quite frankly, like my areas of expertise do not extend into tax and trust law, and so, you know, I'm perfectly capable of advising parliamentarian type things and, you know, open records, open meetings type issues. But you were going, it would be my legal advice that, you know, that the board retain, you know, tax counsel or trust counsel to provide guidance on those things. And that could be either done directly by the board or through the city attorney's office. I don't think there's, I mean, it wouldn't bother me if you guys decided to do it, the board decided to do it independent of the city's attorney's office.
And I would, I would think, for me, on areas that we can use the city's resources, would be wise to help on expenses, and then the areas where like tax and legal, where we have to go outside and use the money, because there will be expenses. Will the trust be billed for expenses if the city provides the services? Is there like a line item for that?
The city, the trust agreement allows the city to calculate an administrative expense for the time. We haven't gone through and done that yet. You know, I don't know if it'll be that much, it'd be a lot more efficient to go outside. Hire someone to do it. But we would have additional, like Adam said, we would have tax advisors, we'll have an insurance broker, I think. Probably, if we're going to move towards a 990, and we've had a lot of discussions, if we do get the 501(c)(3) status and have to file 990s, we'll probably need to hire an outside accounting firm, because the city doesn't do that. We don't file taxes. So there are some outside expenses that we'll have, but generally, administrative services, just, you know, putting together the meeting, getting a bank account, making sure that everything's filled out for that, putting together reports for the board, things like that. The city's resources are available to the trustees, and can certainly do that without a lot of headroom.
I've served on boards where I've been the signer, and it's hard to track me down in an efficient fashion to get me to come sign documents. So to this point, I'm in favor of making, resolving that Mr. Tyndall could sign on behalf for setting up the FEIN and getting us our resolution set up and those things. And we can always resolve further to change that in our next meeting if we wanted to. But from an efficiency standpoint, Mr. Applegate, to your comments, I think it makes sense to have Mr. Tyndall sign on behalf of the board as of today.
Motion for that, or is it?
I'll make that motion.
Just one clarification, though. Usually, except we'll have two people, so it's either or, because I'm assuming Craig's not always going to be available.
Let me go anywhere.
So most boards I've been on might have one of two people. And so whether that would be our chairman to sign on behalf of the board, I would assume, and weigh in, Richard, I agree with him from a practical basis, the majority will probably be with you, Craig.
I would like to retract my motion. And re-clarify that motion to be our chairman, Mr. Gentry or Mr. Tyndall, have the authority from a resolution and standpoint to this point to sign on behalf of the board of trustees.
Second.
Okay, it's been properly motioned and seconded to have Mr. Tyndall and Mr. Gentry be able to sign on behalf of the trust. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, I suppose we need to take a vote. Ms. Brown?
Mr. Applegate?
Aye.
Ms. Davis?
Aye.
Mr. Flatt?
Aye.
Mr. Gentry?
Aye.
Mr. LaLance?
Aye.
Mr. Moss? Mr. Stone?
Aye.
It's been properly approved. Kind of got lost a little bit in the agenda here.
I think maybe 6C.
So we covered 5C a second ago, okay? Other, other expense allocation?
Yeah, other expense allocation. So what the trust allows is for the trustees to prepare an annual budget. And we've not done that yet, but we will hopefully have a preliminary budget for the next meeting. And so part of the expenses will be, we'll calculate city allocation for administrative expenses, look at some insurance costs. Just to let you know, I think that's, I might be jumping ahead, but I've talked with a local broker, most of you know, Ken Halliburton, who handles Kristi Houston's insurance, I think. And he's said he can come to the next meeting and talk about insurance coverages, but we'll need to, E and O coverage and general liability and things that normally we would handle. So there'll be some of those expenses, there'll just be some regular expenses. And so as we go forward, think about, next meeting, we'll come up with an amount and allow that to come out of the trust and put into a bank, just to be able to operate for a period of time. So we're looking at all the different variables in there to come up with a reasonable amount to handle that.
Any other discussion on insurance? I don't think any actions required at this point on insurance. Want to move forward to a review of tax status? A tax opinion?
Yeah, we, the trust agreement's written to allow the trust to operate as a 501(c)(3) or operate under section 115, which is where the municipalities operate, and that's how the municipalities are, federal taxation is section 115. It's not clear that this entity would comply completely with section 115. That'd be nice, because we don't have to file anything, we don't have to file 990s, we don't have to do anything else. But it's not clear that that would be the case. And so I think the best avenue to make that decision for the board would be to retain tax counsel and let them do the research and analyze whether or not the trust can fit under section 115, or we'll need to either operate under 115 if we can, or under 501(c)(3). And if it's under 501(c)(3), you know, what steps we need to take to secure that designation and how we get designated. Kristi Houston's a, is it an operating foundation or a non-operating?
We are not, when you say operating or non-operating, do you mean?
So you guys, non-operating, you're just dispersed money, you don't have to, you don't run nonprofit from an operational standpoint on a daily basis?
I'd have to double check that, I don't want to state it incorrectly.
Yeah, so those are the kind of questions that we'll need to have answered. I think we're a non-operating foundation. I think you guys are probably a non-operating foundation.
No, unraised, wrong.
Yeah.
What about our council that we had hired at the city council level? The Jims, or was it two different Jims?
Joe Gibbs.
Joe?
Joe Gibbs is the tax attorney that he, he's with Bradley A. Rant, Bolt Cummings, or Cummings-Bolt, I can't remember. And he drafted the trust agreement, so he's familiar with that. I mean, there are obviously other options, but he's someone who's familiar with the structure of this trust.
He'd be the logical choice. Was he the one that was here that day or on the screen? That's the only, there was one guy that was kind of a shorter guy, another guy that was kind of a taller guy.
Joe was a bit shorter.
Joe was shorter.
The shorter guy?
I know Joe well.
Okay.
Excellent.
All right. So if the board, if the board wants to make a motion that we retain, he has for the benefit of.
I'll so move.
Opinion.
I'll move that.
You move that?
Yes. Are we moving for specifically Joe, or are we moving for just that we're going to hire a council?
I'd recommend Joe, but it could be.
We want to get some quotes, though. I mean, there are local people that do this, so.
I have a question. I know we have a motion and not a second yet. I have a question from the standpoint of, we haven't approved any budgeting or any allocation for funds. We don't have an EIN. Do we want to engage council prior to our ability to pay council?
They'll trust us.
Rick's got it.
We would, yeah, we would inform of what status we're in. He may decide to wait until we pay, or he may decide to go ahead and make a, see a need, make a flyer on that matter, but.
We may need that determination before we can get the EIN, because we may need to know what we're filing under in order to get the EIN.
We may get the, we have to get a designation letter.
Right. So it might be that the city has to pay, and then the trust has to reimburse the city.
And then he'll get paid eventually?
We regularly get bills from Mr. Gibbs, and we regularly pay them, so.
That's good.
Especially if there's a history, if he's prepared all of this, that does make sense. But, you know, there are people that do our work locally that do a great job, so.
Yeah, I would say there's value in having the same lawyer that put the trust together work on this, but I do think it's also prudent for us. I mean, if you give a, if you give any lawyer an open checkbook and just say, I need to hire this, it can be, it can be a vast array of dollars. So I think it'd be smart to get, maybe get a quote from, you know, say, how much would you charge to do X? And maybe get it from another firm that handles it, make a decision.
Yeah, we could do that. I would say, and I don't disagree with you at all, but I would say that we regularly use this law firm, and I understand their billing practices pretty well. And I don't know if he discounted us on, because law firms generally have a corporate rate. I don't know if we got, if we talked to him about that or not. I would imagine they probably did, give us a corporate rate.
Lawyers in that firm have. I don't recall whether he did or not.
Okay, yeah, so sometimes we do, but you're right, you know, you don't want to give an open checkbook, but we have a relationship with them.
And there is, in that field, there's not a ton of people that do it, so it's worth paying, even if it's more, the right people to get the job done.
Yeah.
And I suppose, too, the question is, if we need a tax, if we need the tax opinion to do the IRS filings and all of that, maybe the engagement is very discreet and specific, and it's for this tax opinion for purposes of filing for, you know, the nonprofit status. And then, you know, and then the board can come back and decide after that process. And then, you know, and then the board can come back and decide after that process is done to consider other lawyers, but I mean.
Yeah, part of the reason, part of the reason I was asking was because, and this is, this is going back, I mean, probably over a year now since that meeting occurred. I thought that this decision had already been made. I mean, I thought we had already gotten legal counsel, we'd already paid the short guy and the tall guy, or one of the short guys or the tall guys to tell us this is what, this is what, this is, how this is going to qualify. And so that's kind of why I was asking a little bit, and it probably goes to your point, which is, you know, a little bit of, the more we keep asking, they give us the same answer and keep charging us for it. But, long story short, I'm okay with going with the, I don't know in person, but they're professional even.
Mr. Gibbs?
Joe Gibbs. I'll make a motion that we retain him for the specific purpose of giving us what you, what you just laid out for the EIN number, and then we can kind of move forward from there.
And part of the exercise is, you're right, there was some discussion of this, and so the trust agreement was written to cover everything, because we weren't sure exactly how everything was going to flesh out. And now the trust agreement is done, going back to get an opinion will protect the board and give the board something to rely on now that we know exactly what's going to be, how it's going to be handled. Now, if I were to guess, I would say that he's going to say, just get your nonprofit, because get your 501(c)(3) status and do a 990, because I'm not sure there's going to be an answer. What we're doing here isn't covered with a lot of the law that I found. And so he's probably going to say, to do that, and that's good, because we, you get a level of confidence relying on legal advisors if you do have to go before the IRS.
My concern is, you may go to Joe and ask him about section 115, and he could say, well, we don't do section 115. That's my only concern about making a motion that is very specific like that, is we could make that motion, and you go to him, and he says, we don't do section 115.
Well, the determination is what I meant, whether it's 115 or the other, I mean, I just go to him to make the determination.
And he very well could come back and say, you know, I've done enough research to tell you that you're not going to get a clear answer on this. That's highly possible. And so the default would be, go get your nonprofit status, and then file your 990s every year, and then you're covered. But, you know, not being tax lawyers or anything else, until we kind of walk down that path, it's hard to get good direction on which way we were going to go.
I think we have two motions, or Mr. Gibbs.
Competing motions.
Yeah, I withdraw my motion.
How you withdrew your motion, huh?
No, I didn't.
There just wasn't a second.
I forgot.
You can second it.
It wasn't a second.
But it was never seconded, so technically.
Oh.
We had the discussion before we seconded, so.
Oh.
Second.
Can the motion be restated for some level of?
Motion is, we'd hire Joe Gibbs, might say Joe Gibbs ain't his firm, for initial counsel. But I want to leave the door open, because if we have local counsel that is qualified for other areas, I would very much want to use them, so I don't want this to be exclusive for them. It's really initial, got us to get all of our filings properly done is what I'm really interested in.
Yeah.
Iris.
And then going forward, I'd like to take a fresh look.
If the board want, and this is a suggestion, the board can do whatever, or we'll do whatever the board wants, way I should say, I guess. We could, we could talk to Joe and get some idea of what he thinks it might cost to get to that opinion. And I think, and you mentioned that you have a local, you guys use a local, we'll find out who that is and pair the two, and then if the board will give us the discretion to hire who we think would be the best person to get, then we'll do. We'll go ahead and do that and get the opinion as quickly as we possibly can.
Trying to think how to tweak the motion then. What you've really asked for is to relieve discretion to you, correct?
Yeah, go get a tax opinion.
I'll tell you what, why don't we just keep it with Joe for this initial?
Yeah.
And then we'll, we can always change.
We can change that going, so.
We can change it later, and we'll just.
I think my motion covers it then, to engage Joe Gibbs and his firm for the initial filings, and then we can take a fresh look.
You have a second?
Second.
Okay. Motion's been properly moved and seconded, any discussion?
Ms. Brown?
Mr. Applegate?
Aye.
Ms. Davis?
Aye.
Mr. Flott?
Aye.
Mr. Gentry?
Aye.
Mr. LaLance?
Aye.
Mr. Moss?
Aye.
Mr. Stone?
Aye.
I probably should have said this before the vote, but, I mean, it doesn't change the vote, but it just, the importance of getting this opinion now is that all the legal counsel before had been provided to the city as a legal entity. This is a legal opinion that's to the Board of Trustees.
Right.
And so that fiduciary duty is running to you.
Yeah, good point.
And it protects the board as a board and as individually as directors.
Gives you the ability to rely on it.
That's right.
I think it's a prudent decision. I mean, if the gentleman is familiar with the structure and everything that we're doing here, he'll probably do the work fairly efficient. And like you said, we can always come back subsequently and make a determination if we want to move forward with different counsel. I think the motion kind of left it open for us to do that, so. All right, any other discussion around tax status? Or we, I suppose we need to talk about HC, retention of an accounting firm?
Yeah, I kind of mentioned that before, it's, issue of accounting firm is probably an ongoing discussion, and it's going to rely a little bit on the tax opinion. It's likely that we'll probably want to go outside, but we are exploring perhaps having the 990s as part of the audit and doing that down. And so really, we want to provide the board with information that we're not sure yet, if we need an outside accounting firm, if the city can handle the accounting for it, have a 990 done, if we need a 990 done by an outside firm as part of the audit process. So we'll come back and give you what we think is the best solution in that situation.
Well, you think you know some firms you may want to recommend at that point, at that point in time as well?
I don't, but.
A handful locally, really only one or two that are qualified to do this locally. But they're qualified, I think, to do it.
So point of clarification earlier, you noted that this would be audited underneath the city's audit, but we're going to have to do a separate audit and a separate 990? Or are we going to depend upon the city's audit to do our 990?
Yeah, we were going to see if we could put it under the scope of the city auditors to include a 990 for the trust. And so it's a discussion, I don't know, you probably haven't had a chance to talk to them yet.
I have not.
Okay, so we go back to the city auditors, but Joe Hastings is the city's auditor, and talk to them about it and see if they're able to do that.
They're pretty much the only firm locally that would routinely do this type of work.
Yeah.
That I'm aware of, there couldn't be others, that's the only one I'm aware of.
I think DBF did ours on the pension for MED.
Yeah, they did. They did the audits, yeah. But we'll have to see if they feel comfortable in all their rules, ethical rules and everything else to do the 990 at the end of the year. And we may have to look for another firm that would be able to do that as separate from the audit. And if they were, if we're going to take that step, then we'd probably just say, well, you know, do the trust's accounting for the year.
Could you inquire with Mr. Gibbs and the other inquiry you're doing from the standpoint to make sure that from a fiduciary standpoint, we can depend upon an audit prepared for the city, protect us from fiduciary standpoint on the trustee's side?
Right, yeah. Yeah, we'll have, that's a good question. They do the pension board's audit, right? Or do we have a separate auditor for the pension board? I mean, the city pension.
I think.
So they do the same thing for the pension board.
I think.
Which is a component unit of the city from a financial standpoint, so it's the same relationship. But we'll cover that question, it's a good question.
Thank you.
Yes, sorry, Craig. I think, you know, for now, just not knowing our structure quite yet, and, you know, what our tax status is even going to be, and we're going to have a while, you know, we won't have to do anything until at least a year and a couple of months from now to where we really have to do something. We'll probably want to do something before that, but we've got time on this. I'd say we get this stuff straightened away and then, but I will tell you, I was, for, just for FYI, I mean, I lean towards wanting to start off just having our own accounting work done, just to keep everything as separate as we can. And then if ultimately we find that we can roll it into the city's audit and everybody's cool with it, but, you know, as this thing is getting started, we probably want to keep this separation as much as we can and keep it treated like its own separate entity as much as we can until we can, because, you know, all this is very new, as you guys, you know, everybody here knows, this is kind of a, it's not a real common entity type. And so we're going to need to probably just treat it very, very separate and individual, and then we can always roll it in or whatever, but that's just my thought process on it and that everybody think about.
Why don't we talk to the accounting firms locally?
Yeah.
And see what, see what their billing would be, and now, as part of the audit, it will have to be part of the city's audit, because it is a component unit of the city, so it'll have to be included in there. We could have a separate one that.
Is just for this.
But from the accounting standpoint, to get up to the audit.
Yeah.
Having an accounting firm would create the separation that you'd need.
One thing, one bigger picture point that we may have to, I mean, we always want to be watching out for expenses, right? You know, the expense line for what we're overseeing here, but getting this thing started, I've left a little bit of grace in my mind, just knowing that there might be a little more expenses now than there will be in year five or six or seven, you know? We're just going to have a lot more operational type work that's going to need to get done on the front end of this thing. And so it might not be like we all want it to be, especially in the first six months or the first year, but, so I'm kind of, I guess in my mind, thinking a little bit, like I'm willing to spend a little bit more money, do these things separately, hire the firm to just do an audit for us, even if we don't think they have to, maybe even, just to kind of cover some extra bases as we go forward early on. And then as we get into it a few years and get through a few snafus, if there are any, then we can start really trimming down those expenses and fine tuning a little bit, but just a thought process.
Yeah, it's like Richard said, I mean, the MED was separately audited, and that audit was incorporated into the city's audit. So, I mean, we could certainly do that. It's hard to over audit.
Sound like an accountant. I was going to say, I would never say that, but.
So I think the agreement now is to kind of hold off on any type of vote on any accounting firm until we get things kind of settled and set up.
We'll explore with some outside firms and bring it back for our next meeting.
All right, thank you. All right, any more questions on retention of accounting firm? Seeing none, we'll move on to agenda item nine, a review of committee of contributions.
So just real quickly, the committee of contributions has been formed, and I'll tell you who's on it in a second. The purpose of the committee of contributions is to make recommendations to the trustees. We talked a little bit about that earlier, the type of contributions that they'll be making recommendations on. What we anticipate with the committee is to work some with city staff, because we've covered some ground on this, and to formulate a grant application process for, we call it, we call it charity partners, to come in and ask for funds from the board, ask from the city now, ask for from the board in the future. So it'll be a grant process and then an accountability process to make sure that the ones that have asked for in the past are coming to ask for again and accomplish what they want to do. So the committee will work to set that process up and then come back and make recommendations to the board. They're required to do that by February the 15th each year. The board will take their recommendations and can do with them what they will. They can accept them, they can make changes to them, they can do whatever the board wants. And then that recommendation will then go to the city council, and council has the right to veto any of the recommendations that were made to charitable contributions. They won't make changes, they'll just have yes or no on any one. And if they say no on something, it will come back to the trustees and then they can decide to either reallocate the money within the parameters of the agreement, put it back into the trust and hold it for the future years.
You have to actually disperse it, I think, though, wouldn't you?
Reallocate it amongst the contributions, yeah.
If there's a choice beyond that, you could put it back in the fund, couldn't you, Craig?
Yeah, that's what I meant.
You could. Put it back in the fund, because you'd rather disperse 5% or then we've got some tax consequences.
Well, yeah, if we, if we, if we fall into a 501(c)(3), we'll have to disperse some. If we're, if we're 115, we don't have to support.
I assume.
We don't have to comply with that, but yeah, we would have to. And there's some rules around foundations, and there's some differing rules on that. Generally speaking, that's for a foundation, that's what you're required to do. So that'll be part of the tax opinion that we get.
Are we talking about if the city rejects one of the recommendations that we send them?
Yeah.
I think the bylaws state what is to be done with that, whether it's redistributed amongst the remaining ones or if there's a new one selected.
And I would say for your distribution, you still, remember, you still have 83% of distributions going out to the city, so that would count as a distribution, we meet the 5% that go out. But yeah, Richard's right. So then it could go back. The math wouldn't be enough to affect that 5%, so it could go back to the trust if the trustees don't want to reallocate it amongst the other contributions. So there's some, a little bit of back and forth in there. Frankly, I don't think that there's, what we're looking at for the city's standpoint, and we'll have some internal discussions as well, anticipate that this probably is going to happen in the next year and not this year, because February 15th is fast upon us, and the committee hasn't even met yet. So the whole process probably will have some time to mature before we have to use it. Let me tell you who's on the committee right now. Appointees to the committee are Wade Hayes, Dr. John Hinkle from First Presbyterian, Lynn Lee, LaLynch, Ronnie Martin, Carl Montgomery, and Collier Andrew Smith. That's the Committee on Contributions. And we are, have you set a date for their meeting?
February 28.
February 28 will be their first meeting, so we'll put them together, and they will need a set of bylaws, which the trustees will pass, which is kind of the next step. And I don't want to jump ahead of the chairman here, but that's 9C. If you don't have any questions, then we can take up the bylaws.
Craig or Mr. Chairman, if there's any, I'd be glad to work with whoever works on that grant application. We found a really great company where it's online, and it's, that's how all the nonprofits are used to applying, so I'd be glad to share that if that's Karen or Angela.
Angela, we may end up using the online system. Keep any of that. That's a good idea.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Tindall, I suppose the bylaws we need to pass are on page 17 of our packet, is that right?
Right.
Let me run something out here real quick, because I want to get this on the table, but I think we'll be able to do the bylaws on the Committee on Contributions, but the idea that the council is able to veto what the trust board sends through, I don't ever recall that being part of our discussion back when we, back when we did this, and I'm a little concerned that that is going to, that that is going to hinder our separation as relates to, you know, the, for our capability to get the prudent investor rule, there needs to be some part of this that the council doesn't have the authority to fend, essentially. And now, and I don't, I just want to say, that's something that may, we need to, we need to make sure and talk to the outside legal counsel about. I know that's in the trust document, and we may, that may be something which we need to look at. All I'm worried about is if, because part of that discussion with the comptroller was that there is this portion of this that is going to go, that's going to be separate, that's going to go to charitable organizations. It still will go to charitable organizations, but if the council can veto it, that takes away that it will be separate. But it may not be a problem, but I just want to make sure we talk about that, we make sure that that's, we double and triple check that. I don't, you know, I don't see that that's going to be, that that's going I don't, you know, I don't see that that's gonna be, that that's gonna be a big problem. I wouldn't foresee the council vetoing, especially with all, but, and really, I think that was the reason that we put all those parameters in there is because I don't believe that we expected to be able to veto it. Me, we being, when I was on the council.
So that everyone knows where that's at, that's in appendix A-15, item E under section 11.
Yeah, we can go back and double check it here. Council doesn't have, all we can do is act as a, kind of a stop on any contribution that would have a big impact on the city. If we, at some point, the contributions become a pretty large amount. And so if the committee and even the board wanted to do something, the council says we don't, the community think that that's the right thing from a charitable standpoint to do in the city, to construct something, to build something, to do this or that, then they can say, no, you can't do that. Now, they can't say any more than that. Then the money goes back and be, I guess, like we talked about, be redistributed to other charitable organizations or go back in the trust and then be distributed in the future. But we'll make sure that it doesn't create anything, but I don't think the, just the actual stop...
I understand the reasoning, and all I'm kinda saying is that I wanna make sure that it's not the combination of the separation and the gifts, that the gifts will just qualify if they say, well, that doesn't really mean, you know, we don't deem that as being separate if they have the veto power. I mean, what happens if they just veto all of them? We gotta start all over and, you know, and what's the purpose of the board of trustees overseeing that? I mean, I just think it's worth checking into that, because I know there was discussion about that at the comptroller level.
Okay.
But that, excuse me, clarification, that passed the legislature, I guess. Was there a clean opinion by the comptroller in that bill?
Yeah, yeah, but they don't, they didn't, they passed the charter change and helped us with the draft of the trust, so, I mean, they've got all that.
That granular, it wasn't to that detail.
Okay.
Yeah, that's...
It's a detail that...
So that's kinda why I think we might wanna just, just double check that one.
Gotcha.
We'll check that.
It's not that big of a, like, yeah, I don't think it's the, I just don't want it to end up biting us later as well.
Well, that, if we're talking about conflicts, the city council reserves the right to effectively, by the way I've read this, demand an emergency loan from the trust.
Yeah, that's all okay.
Well, I would assume that if that creates, if that doesn't create a conflict, then their ability to veto one of the recommendations should not be, create a conflict, but your point is taken.
It's the, it's the 15% that matters the most.
I got you.
Yeah, yeah.
That loan is required to be paid back, right?
Yeah.
The thoughts, comments, or questions on the bylaws as they currently stand?
And we're looking at the bylaws on the committees, the committee on contributions now, right?
We are.
Seventeen.
It is seventeen through twenty, seventeen through, I think twenty, correct?
Uh...
Yes.
I'll move their approval.
Okay.
It's been properly motioned and approved to accept the bylaws of the committee on contributions. Any additional discussion by any board members? Chair Nunn, we'll move to a vote, Ms. Brown?
Mr. Applegate?
Aye.
Ms. Davis?
Aye.
Mr. Flat?
Aye.
Mr. Gentry?
Aye.
Mr. LaLance?
Aye.
Mr. Moss?
Aye.
Mr. Stone?
Aye.
Thank you. Okay, moving to the next agenda item, future meetings. Mr. Tenon, do we wanna set like a standard meeting date or that may be too difficult for everyone to do or frequency? I assume that we need to meet again here relatively soon in the month of February.
It's February or right beginning of March is what we had anticipated, so we can, I can have my staff get dates from everybody unless everybody's willing to offer a date tonight, which is kind of a hard thing to do, I know sometimes. Either way, we're good. My office will be happy to contact everybody and we're gonna date that works.
You did say February and March? February and March or just...
Well, at the end of February or March would give us time, at the beginning of March, somewhere in there, for the next meeting would be, would be a good idea. If we wanna do a standard meeting, we're fine with that, you know, we could do, you know, try and hit the ends of the month. But if we do a standard meeting, I think with the board as busy as they are, somewhat like council is, you'll end up moving around all the time. So it's almost easier to do it ad hoc as you get closer to the, little closer to the date.
I agree. I'm fine with your office circulating some dates around unless anybody else has an opinion on that.
In light of how we got to this date and time, I would recommend we try to plan things further out.
Okay, yeah.
Because I remember the challenge we had in trying to get this nailed down with everybody's calendar, so...
Yeah, we had a holiday in there that was...
Spring break will be in March probably, so we wanna be before that.
It's March the 25th through the 31st, and I will be going the 23rd through the 3rd. March through April.
March, where's he in March?
So typically, the first weeks of the month and the last week of the month may be difficult for folks. Should we just shoot for a time at some point in the middle of the month? Okay.
Does it make sense to meet, the committee on contributions has their first meeting the 28th?
Right.
Is it beneficial for us to meet after they meet for any discussion purposes? Or does that matter on that?
I think it's gonna be organizational meeting, somewhat like we've done here, is to give them an idea of what they're supposed to do, have them elect a chair, you know, those kinda things. They won't be making any substantive decisions until much later. They'll be putting together the program on how to get applications and things like that.
Sunday meeting, on the 28th?
Four to six.
Okay. All right, well, we'll move forward with the next topic on the agenda, which is topic 10b, recommended topics, which include process for retention of an investment advisor. I guess we can start there, development of an investment policy, development of a budget policy and an annual budget. Are these things, do we have any, any recommendations currently at the moment for investment advisors or anybody to help us out with this thing?
No, what I thought might be good is Ms. Davis and Kristi Houston went through a process...
Mm-hmm.
How long ago?
2018.
2018. And maybe next meeting, asking Anne to share with us how Kristi Houston did it and give some oversight on, and Anne explained it to me, a really good process to find an investment advisor. So that's why I recommended it maybe for the next meeting.
All based on best practices. It was very, very thorough process. What you don't realize is there are investment firms that specialize, well, all of you probably do, but there are investment firms that specialize in private foundations and different levels of corpus. So it's just all mapped out and you just are, it's like a puzzle, trying to find the one that fits what you're looking for.
We may also wanna add to the list the insurance discussion.
Yeah, I have a list of different things we talked about that we'll bring back.
And with the insurance, you get into the cybersecurity and that's like a whole nother process, that's the process, procedures.
And did the firm you retained, did they help develop the investment policy or did they draft?
They did. Best practices on that is that it's reviewed every two years, so, once it's established.
Okay. And this one is gonna be, you know, I think designed to somewhat ensure compliance with Tennessee code annotated as it falls under TCRS pension plan, under the Tennessee Department of Treasury. So I know from experience, because that's pretty much what I look at every day, that there's certain restrictions and what we can invest in there, so we can definitely make sure that that's consistent. And I suppose the last point is development of budget and, but budget policy and an annual budget. So is that something we wanna include on the next meeting and discuss?
We plan on trying to prepare that, preliminary budget, to the trustees to take a look at and, was a graph of policy.
Any other topics we wanna add to the agenda for future meetings?
I just had a question about the fiscal year, the fiscal year being the July through June 30th, that must be the city's fiscal year.
Audit, because they're incorporated into our, will have to be incorporated to audit. That's what we, we had worked on a calendar year for a long, most of the, about two weeks ago or about a week ago, we're talking with, we said, oh gosh, we're gonna have to do a fiscal, fiscal year to match the audit, so that's the reason why, and we worked on a calendar year, it makes some sense to be calendar year, you guys probably do a calendar year.
We do a calendar year, which makes figuring out that number.
Yeah.
You know.
Yeah, but because of the audit requirements, we went to...
It's understandable.
Chairman, I'd just like to make an observation, I don't want on the record or even repeat it, but I kinda wish this were NHC's board. Unanimous votes, no dissent, 41 million more than we came in. Good board meeting.
Yeah, yeah. It's interesting to note, the Kristi Houston Foundation started out with about $41 million.
Interesting.
So over 36 years, we've given away 128 million to local nonprofits and our corpus is down a little bit, but we had, we had hit 100 million before we started going backwards more recently with the downturn. So this is truly exciting.
One of the things I mentioned earlier, and I guess it would go along with the topics for the next meeting, I don't wanna belabor anything, that's kinda why I was offering the lunch issue to not just make these meetings go so long, but if you guys want me to, I'll have an Excel spreadsheet. It takes a little bit of time to get through it. It's a, it's a 10 or, 10 or 12 or 15 minute kind of a deal. It's really basically this spreadsheet that they've got back here folded up that I can kinda walk through. I think it would be beneficial for you guys in some way or another to kind of have a really good handle on the impact piece of this, you know, where this really, where the impact is gonna be, how it's gonna get there, there's, but if y'all are already familiar enough with that, I can try to be prepared, we can go through it if we get through the rest of the stuff quickly, but if we wanna do it individually, y'all just call me and I'll be glad to go through it with you.
Just an agenda item for the next meeting, because I think that would be helpful.
I agree.
I know what I've read, both Scott Roden has published as well as others, but I...
It's tough.
I would rather, I'd rather hear it from someone who's involved in that.
It's hard, it's fairly complex to get into an article.
Yeah, we'll light you up on the board here if you...
Light the spreadsheet up, but I'll just tell you, I'll just do my thing from back here, but yeah, that's, I think it'd be beneficial.
Chairman, I'd recommend that be an agenda item for our next meeting.
That's acceptable.
Certainly acceptable to me.
It's really to the city's credit, this is a very unique thing and, gosh, who knows over time, other cities, other communities may, but I explained it to our attorney in Atlanta, he had never heard of it and he is one smart fella. He said, this is really unique. And that was what, Rick, two years ago when we...
Yeah, I'm surprised it's that unique.
To sell a utility in form of foundations.
I'm surprised. You're cutting edge back in today.
Some of this stuff, also, you gotta kinda remember, some of this, some of these things are in place for kinda control mechanisms. What might not be as unique is to sell an asset and put it in the general fund.
Yeah.
And being someone that was on the MED board for six, seven years, I will, I'll commend the city, but I will commend the employees and leadership of MED, because there are other utilities that gave away their utility. And don't quote me on this, but due to some economic pressures and competitive pressures and the inability to do public-private partnerships, the Johnson City broader utility board up there effectively gave away their utility.
Wow.
The City of Lebanon, I think, ultimately gave their utility to Middle Tennessee Electric. So to run a utility in a way that is profitable enough to sell it for $300 million and put $240 million into this trust, I think speaks a lot to the history of this city and the history of the employees and leadership of MED, so...
Good point.
And the geographic location of Murphy Spur in their big picture, Ron.
It's a very, very good thing that we have.
But it's my understanding too, back in 1986, the county had hoped to get the money from the sale of the hospital. They were building schools as fast as they could and there was some great leadership there. Matt Murphy went to the foundation that funded the hospital, well, he knows, he's so involved with Ascension, back in 1927 and said, may we use the proceeds of this to start a private health legacy foundation? And they said yes. And we don't even have the money coming in every year, like, you know, all this additional money that comes every year, this is gonna be fantastic.
Be good for the city.
Oh, wow.
Absolutely. Any other topics of discussion before we adjourn? Anything else we need to discuss?
I think that's it, thank you.
All right. Well, it's approximately 5:39 PM, we can consider this meeting adjourned. Thank you all.